Okay. I'd like to follow the order, the December 2nd, 2013, special workshop meeting of school board. Should we do a call to order and roll call?
Rick Pavanato.
Here.
Julia Beckman.
Here.
Mike Davenport.
Here.
Keith Mattoon.
Here.
Terry Pettich.
Here.
Let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'd like to welcome students from South High School who are going to share their perspectives on their leadership roles in the theater productions at South High School.
Well, we're very excited to have several students here tonight to represent our theater program. South High is anxious next week to offer our production of a Shakespeare production, Midsummer Night's Dream. And we have three members of the production team tonight, student director, an actress, and a sound designer to talk about the experiences they've had in our theater program, so.
Hello, my name is Illorita Mamidovsky. I'm one of the lead actresses in Midsummer Night's Dream. I think one of the biggest things this role has taught me is responsibility and confidence. It's definitely helped shape my perspectives and make me a better person. A lot of what we've done is a lot of organizing, a lot of memorizing, various other things. It's been, it's always a struggle to memorize and to get everything done, and we have a very short amount of time, but we always pull together something wonderful. As an actress, you're onstage and you learn a lot, and coming into high school and being a girl that didn't have very high self-esteem at first, and being in a theater program, it has definitely shaped me and made me a lot more confident as a person. And I think that's one of the best things about our theater department because it is so well-developed and we have such great teachers. Mrs. Rubin is probably one of my favorite teachers ever. She has always reached out, she's a great woman, a great role model, and a wonderful director. She's taught me so much, and I'm very, very grateful to have learned from her. She's definitely going to be the reason that this show is going to be so fantastic, and I'm so confident in the fact that it will be a wonderful show. And we have our student director as well to share a little bit more.
Hi. Hi, I'm Jasmine Smith, and I'm the student director for Midsummer Night's Dream. And one thing that is really good about me being student director is that I'm learning so much from the head director, which is Ms. Tiffany Rubin, and she's taught me so much in the short four weeks that we've been rehearsing. And I just hope that I can take this into my career because I do want to study film and become a director when I go to college. And I just, it has made my self-esteem more because when I came to South, I didn't really know what I wanted to do, what my place was going to be. And when I started being in the student theater program, it just opened up a whole new world of new possibilities and things that I can do. And I'm just so glad that South has a really great theater program that students can come into and feel warm and welcome from the teachers and the students. And I just really hope you guys come see Midsummer Night's Dream.
I'm Jeff Heffernan. I'm on the stage crew for this show. I am the sound designer. So basically, I'm in charge of anything that has to do with sound. Overall, being on the stage crew has taught me a lot about leadership and teamwork and working with other people, but it's also mostly taught me about being responsible and being able to manage grades and after-school activities, and just how to be a leader and how to work further to make myself a better citizen and a better student. And I'd like to thank you, as the administration, for providing us with such a great amount of resources with Mr. Evans and the various renovations that are going on.
Thank you. Any questions from anybody or comments?
Just wanted to ask, how many hours a week is this taking for you? Does it vary between your various roles?
It does. I know for the actors, the days have varied since there are various scenes in the show. For me being one of the lead roles, it's been about four hours from Monday to Friday.
Per day?
Per day, yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Wow, alright.
It's a lot of hard work going into it.
And the others?
The stage crew is there from 3:30 to 6:30, and then on Saturdays, we're usually there from 9:00 to 1:00.
And for me, I'm there every day because I'm the student director, so I have to be there for everyone, so they make sure they know everything and what they're supposed to do.
Tell them what to do.
So now, we're here, I'm there from about 3:30 to 6:30, and as, you know, we get closer to showtime, the days get longer. So next week, from 3:30 till 10 o'clock.
My, wow, my, my. That is a long day. Looking forward to it. When are the dates?
Well, I was gonna say, we need to plug the dates and how to buy the tickets, and this is your big opportunity.
December 13th and 14th, starting at 7:00 PM, tickets will be sold at the door.
Okay.
At Downers Grove South.
I was curious, are you sticking to the traditional format of the Shakespeare play, or is it some kind of new, modern adaptation?
It's a wonderful adaptation. It's going to be a post-World War II where the Star Crossed Lovers are nurses and soldiers, and it's wonderful. It's going to be amazing.
That's cool.
It's great.
That is cool.
Any other questions, comments?
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, great play. All right. Next on the agenda is, we'll hear a report on proposals for the new courses.
Thank you, Mr. Pavanato. Tonight, the board will hear presentations by the department chairs from North and South High School about, I believe, five new academic courses. This is a culmination of a process that began five or six months ago, perhaps even earlier, when ideas came forward. Each of these proposals has been vetted already through several levels, including the administration, then back to the department heads, and back to the administration. At this point in time, it's the final presentation to the board, and they're here to answer questions if you have them, and hopefully that we will bring these forward for final approval at the December board meeting. The first group to make a presentation is the Science Department, Mike Hines and Karen Etter. You guys ready to go?
Yeah. We'll just go ahead and we'll talk. Mike? So we'll just get it started, and then if this turns up, I'll direct your attention there. My name's Karen Etter, I'm the Science Chair at South.
I'm Mike Hines, I'm the Science Chair at North.
And at South High, I think you guys might know that Vince Walsh Rock, our Head of Counseling, sends out exit surveys for seniors before they leave. Since I took this role, I've seen on that feedback form students requesting an environmental science option. So Mike and I discussed that, and on the north side of town, they sent out some surveys and surveyed some of our upper-class students about their interest in environmental sciences, and there seems to be an overwhelming interest from students in District 99 to have an environmental science option. So we checked out the AP offerings, and there is an AP environmental science course that's run through AP College Board, and so we're proposing that we have that offering here in District 99 for our students. We would be able to offer this course to juniors and seniors and select sophomores. Considering that students would be taking our biology, chemistry, physics track, we think that students who are concurrently taking physics or have completed physics would be suitable for this class. It would be a year-long course that would earn one credit. Obviously, the syllabus would have to be run through AP College Board. We have teachers who are certified to teach it. It is a semester-long college course, so unlike our AP Biology, Chemistry, and Physics offerings that are a year-long college course taught in an academic high school year, this would be a semester-long collegiate course stretched out over the course of a year. And I don't know, for some of you guys, you might remember that we decided to do that for one semester of our AP Physics C, and that's turning out very favorably for our students who are non-traditional AP students who are taking it this year. So we think this meets our students' needs, we think we have the ability to offer this well with our staff and our facilities, and it's in line with our district goals. So we think it has a lot of potential for our students.
If you think about the type of student that might be interested in this course, in the world today, we're looking at environmental stewardship, and we want our students to be involved in that as much as possible. While we have our traditional Biology, Chemistry, and Physics AP courses, this provides opportunities for students who may not see themselves as AP, that they may want to have this as their passion and venture on into the AP realm. So we're looking at it as a way to open up more opportunities for students. And so the components of it are up there. With wanting science, students to ask their own questions, to become research-oriented, to have long-term projects, this course certainly would lend itself to those opportunities for students that we could provide for them.
Are we taking questions now or at the end of all of our presentations?
I think at the end of the presentations.
Okay.
Is that what we planned? That's my recollection.
Excellent. Okay, so then we'll turn it over to the Social Studies Department.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Esposito, Chair at South High School.
I'm Jill Rose, Chair at North High School.
And we will be presenting the new course that we're proposing, Multicultural Studies in American Society. So this course will be a junior-senior elective that will fit along with the rest of our junior-senior electives program. It's a 300-level course that would be open to any student who has, is really in their third year of school. So we know that we have students who are in their third year, maybe have not passed Global Connections or US History. We would still allow them to take that course, just not a second-year student. It would gain a half a credit, just like the rest of our social studies electives, and like I said, it'd be offered at the junior-senior year.
I'll be back here.
There we go. So one of the reasons we're so excited to propose this course is because that, the, kind of, the sort of impetus for it was bubbled up from students and parents in our community. Just like the South High exit survey that Karen referenced, there were comments on that same survey by seniors exiting South High that they would like to see a course like this. We also heard from parents in our plan group last year that they'd like to see a course like this. And also, we also had read a study that the DuPage County Regional Office of Education published recently called Voices from DuPage County, and they conducted a qualitative research study of students in DuPage County. And out of that study, they developed 27 recommendations for schools in DuPage County. And two of those recommendations included Recommendation 21, which said that schools should celebrate the history of and contributions to African-Americans to the country and Latinos to the country. And Recommendation 23 said that schools should develop curriculum that allows students to study African-American and Hispanic trends and issues. So all of that combined led us to some focus group conversations with our staff at both ends of town last year, and we talked about beginning to develop this course. The course will also address the Common Core state standards, and the implementation of this course will allow us to do more with speaking and listening and writing and reading, just like we'll be doing with all of the other courses.
So in terms of the curriculum of the course itself, we're going to be using an integrative and comprehensive approach, meaning that we're going to look at both history and current issues in studying the multiple ethnic groups that we have listed on the screen. So we're going to be looking specifically at African-Americans, Latinos-Latinas, and Asian-Americans. We might also include Native Americans in there as well, but our focus is really on the groups that are the minority groups within our community who have really called to say, you know, this is a gap in our curriculum, and we need to have a place in our curriculum. So that's the approach that we're looking to take. In terms of the integrative part two, we'll also look at different perspectives, meaning in social studies terms, the good old political, economic, and social perspectives that comes up in every single course. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Marandola. I am the Career and Technical Education Department Chair at Downers Grove North High School. Valerie Moses, who is the department chair at South, is unable to make it this morning. So I thank you for allowing us to present on behalf of, or at least myself, on behalf of the CT Departments at North and South. The course that we're proposing is called Digital Tools and Communication. This is a course that has been years in the making. As with many technology courses, the day has come, you know, sooner rather than later, to where we have to upgrade what we are doing in our curriculum, both with the technology that's being taught, but just making sure that we're staying relevant and with the times with the technology that our students are using. So what we did was take a look at our current computer offerings, and there's three courses that we are currently offering that definitely needed to be, take a look at the curriculum and potentially upgrade. And so those three courses were our existing keyboarding course, our computer applications course, and our emerging technology course. In taking a look at those three courses, we made the determination that we can condense those three courses into one course, and into one course that we felt was going to be a strong course that took the best elements of those three. And also in creating a course that we could say with confidence that this is a course that students, we believe, should take before graduating from high school. And when I get into the outline of the course and some of the material and concepts that we cover, hopefully you'll understand why. When we created the curriculum for this course, and throughout this process that we're continuing to create the curriculum, we went to each academic department, and we'll continue to do that throughout the next few months, to get a better understanding of what types of computer or technology skills are necessary in those academic areas. What we essentially want to do is take a lot of those computer types of skills off of those teachers' plates and teach that in this course. So for example, if our science teachers are saying our students need to be, you know, proficient in Excel and potentially some other software programs, we want to be able to take that on and make sure that our students are prepared so that by the time they get done taking this course, you know, they're going to be prepared for the computer skills in some of those academic areas. This past summer, we worked with members of the library staff, as well as English and Science Department chairs, to make sure that this course is aligned with the next-generation science standards, as well as the Common Core speaking and listening standards. And what we did is we created a course that has, you know, seven different goals. And so those goals are broken down into units. Goal number one, for example, students will analyze the strengths and limitations of various technical tools, mediums, and then select those best suited for their communication goals. So this is where students are going to learn different types of presentation skills, different types of word processing skills. Moving away from just solely relying on Microsoft Office, they're going to learn elements of Microsoft Office as well as Web 2.0 tools. We're going to give them all of these tools to put in their digital backpack, and then students are going to be able to figure out when the time comes which is the best one for them to use. Students are also going to strategically navigate through information sources to differentiate reliable content, getting students to be able to work through different databases, web searches, so that they're proficient at those skills. Helping students create a positive digital footprint. We'll have students creating portfolios online using Adobe, creating, you know, different PDF files as well. Definitely a focus of this course is going to be students collaborating, both with other students and with teachers as well, especially with the potential of going one-to-one in the next few years. We want to make sure that our students possess those skills, so that we can make effective use of that technology. And then finally, there will still be an element of keyboarding in this course. So students will come in, test to see what their level is as far as speed and accuracy with keyboarding, but instead of using a software based solely in our computer labs, it's going to be an online program so that we can assign work to students as needed for those students who potentially need more help with their typing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brayor Teague. I'm the chairperson for Fine Arts at North High School, and I'm presenting this evening on behalf of the North High Fine Arts Department and South High Fine Arts with Glenn Williams. Glenn is right now facilitating a parent booster meeting about 300 yards away from here, so he sends his regrets for not being here with us tonight. What I'm going to explain tonight, or share a little bit of light on, is not necessarily a new course, but more of a re-categorization of a course that we already offer in District 99, and that's music theory. For those of you that might not know or have ever taken a music theory class, to try to give you the most basic synopsis of it, we're really looking at the math and science behind music. And so this is a relatively small population of learners who will be interested in taking this course, but a very important course for students who are considering majoring in the arts, or in particular, in music in college. As we have offered this course over many decades in District 99, we've had students who have taken the AP exam having completed the coursework. And as I think one of the bullet points that may have been shared with you earlier points out that we have an 80% pass rate for students who have been taking the AP exam after completing the coursework that we've already been offering in District 99. So in essence, we really feel like we have been offering an AP curriculum to our students. We just haven't categorized it that way in District 99. And so this particular, this past summer, our two instructors, one from North and one from South, who have been working extensively with this curriculum in the past, did complete the AP College Board training and certification for this course. So as we move forward with this idea of re-categorization, we feel like this is definitely in line with District 99's goals of offering extended AP opportunities for students. We believe that given the current rigor of the course, that this title more accurately reflects what we're already delivering to students, and we believe this will be right in line with what we're already doing. Thank you for your consideration.
Well, good evening. Once again, we're here to talk about the Math II 2S and Math II Honors course for next year as well, too. As we shared last month, this is part of a larger goal and vision in mathematics to try to really bring the Common Core standards to light for students. When we talk about Math II and Math II Honors, what we're really talking about is two different populations for next year. A population of current freshmen that are currently in Math I right now, that will be in Math II as sophomores, but also eighth graders currently that are taking a Math I course in their feeder school and will be ready to enter District 99 in an advanced portion of the sequence. So primarily, we'll be offering this to freshmen and sophomores per approval next year. And just like Math I replaced Algebra 200 and 300 this year, Math II will replace Geometry 200, 300, and 400 next year.
So much like Math I, this is really just the next course in our proposed sequence. It follows up the work that we are currently doing in Math I and 1S. It will continue to be an integrated course, as will be the subsequent courses. It is definitely a course that falls not only in line with the Common Core standards, but also with the PARC assessments, which are coming online. And probably, you know, one of the things that was different, and we talked about it briefly last month as well, is that there are two separate courses. There's a Math II 2S course, and then there is a Math II Honors course. And so we definitely are going to have an honors level, or we're requesting to have an honors level course for Math II. And that, again, parallels what we have done in the past with the geometry, where we had a Geometry 400, which is our honors geometry course, both for students who completed Algebra as freshmen, as well as for those who took it in eighth grade and were recommended to move into that. So this is sort of being analogous to that in our recommendation.
I think the honors portion is planned to include content that is part of the regular 22S course, but at a deeper level, as well as some of those topics that may lead to enrichment opportunities for honors students as well. So we're currently finalizing the nature of the curriculum of the honors course in relation to the Math II course, but all of the courses will contain a core set of outcomes that are in line with the Common Core state standards. One of the most exciting things about being able to propose this to you tonight is the concept of integration. As we've talked about now for over a year, we're embarking on an integrated approach. And while Math I has lent itself an opportunity to integrate within that course between particular topics, what Math II will allow us to do is to integrate between Math I and Math II topics at a much richer level. We'll be studying some new functions and topics in Math II, but we'll also be studying some previous functions from Math I and tying them into the new studies that we do in Math II, and allowing students to solidify their understandings from Math I at a level that isn't possible without an integrated approach. So in that regard, we're very excited about that opportunity. And as Paul said, we'll continue to have the curriculum of this course be grounded in those eight standards of mathematical practice or the habits of mind that we're trying to develop as a result of the Common Core movement.
That has been one of the biggest challenges, but also one of the biggest areas that we've been excited about this year is working with the Math I students and the standards of mathematical practice. And it's been a big adjustment for both the teachers and students alike, and definitely will be an area that we will continue to work very diligently to ensure we're developing in our students. The final piece of this is that we are planning to have the same sort of supports available for students that need that. So part of this is the 2S option. The 1S classes thus far, I would say, the early indications are have been very successful in helping those students to accommodate this deeper, richer curriculum, as well as the standards of mathematical practice. And so we're asking that we continue to provide that same support for students that will need that at the next level. And also, in addition to that, hopefully with the other interventions that we currently have, including the assistance and resource and things like that, will continue to be options for those students as well.
I'll close by saying that the experiences with the Period and a Half Math 1S class this year have allowed those students to engage in the same curriculum that is college-level and actually more rigorous than our previous 300-level curriculum. We've actually identified some students already that we've moved from Math 1S to Math I because of their success level. We hope to be able to do that at the end of the year with Math I to Math II as well, too. And we also hope to be able to identify some of those current freshmen sitting in a Math I class that might be good candidates for Math II Honors as well, too, as a result. So that layered tier of support has been crucial, and we view that as being crucial in terms of the movement forward because, again, we're serving both current District 99 students, as well as new District 99 students for those that are going to be advanced in our course sequence. At this time, I think we have an opportunity for questions for any of the departments in the proposals that may be of interest to the board.
Any questions?
I don't know, there's a couple of classes I'd like to take. Can we sign up?
Yes, I had a question for Social Studies. First question I had is whether or not this course is being taught somewhere else around the area in DuPage County or Chicagoland suburbs.
We found quite a few schools that have courses like this. Naperville North, Hinsdale South has a similar course. It's an African-American history course, but similar. Naperville North has a course almost, I would say, almost identical to this one. I believe in Chicago, Whitney Young was another one that we found. So a few others as well, I believe.
We see Nutrarians have this course, and they actually move in and out of electives all the time. They've had this course a number of times, or, you know, similarities of it, so.
And is there a specific textbook that you had in mind? What supplementals did you identify as being used for this particular course?
I'll take that, so.
At this time, we're not recommending to adopt a textbook due to the nature of our 21st century learners and the idea of the conversations we're having in our district and all the information that's at our students' fingertips. We just didn't think it was fiscally responsible to adopt a textbook at this point and plan on using supplementary materials in the meantime.
So then with those supplemental resources, what is the genuine focus? Is it obviously the reading aspect, but how do we know what's quality and what's being taught to our kids if it's quote-unquote supplemental?
Well, I mean, like anything, our teachers are experts, and they have to vet the material to make sure that, you know, the materials that are being used aren't fair, they're balanced, and that they're honest and accurate, that they're factually accurate. So in that sense, we'll be going through that same vetting process as we always do, where Jill and I would, you know, certainly be involved in the curriculum development process in that particular way. I'd say also that we have materials, you know, the current materials we have would come into use as well. So our US History textbook would certainly be a place where there's aspects to draw from the historical pieces, along with any of the other textbooks we use, like AP books, sociology, so.
But don't those courses, your core courses right now being offered, don't they use as an anchor a textbook? Is that correct?
Yes, they do.
Okay. And my last question is, there's a lot of state mandates about what needs to be taught during the course of a particular curriculum, whether it's things that happened to Hispanic-Americans during the Great Depression, etc. Are you going to be taking those focuses out of the current classes and into this particular class?
No, if you're talking about the illegal deportation of Mexican-Americans during the Great Depression in California, no, we're not. We're going to keep that into the US History course because since it's a state mandate, we need to ensure that all students have learned that particular material.
I would say, too, that, you know, we're familiar with the Board Policy 6.2 that says that any materials you select have to represent the cultural diversity of America in an unbiased and pluralistic way. So we would make sure. So we would make sure that any materials we selected for this course would be true to that Board Policy.
Thank you.
Any others for us? Thank you.
I have sort of a general question for everybody. Do you have a thought about, or have you already? I know you've surveyed students. How many do you anticipate? Is there going to be one class, two classes? Can you even tell at this point? This is for everyone.
All we're, at this point in time, it, you know, for the course we're talking about, we don't really know. I mean, I could see at South High School having anywhere from four or five sections to eight or nine sections. That's not out of the ballpark for what we have for some of our larger electives. I think this will be a course that, for our current juniors, where they'll only have one opportunity to take it, I think we'll have a lot of students jump on taking it because it's a new course and it sounds interesting, and it's meant for our entire population of students, not just minority students. You know, we want all students to take this course. So it's really hard to tell. We'll go through the regular recommendation process, and we'll look for students where this course would fit their needs, and we would recommend those students.
I'll answer on science. You know, it's hard to tell with electives and with AP classes based on student need and registration and where they can fit things in their schedules. Some of our students sometime, you know, even try to elect not to take a lunch because they're just trying to cram everything in there. So for some students, it's a space issue, that they can't even squeeze these things in their schedule. Based on the survey results that we had sent out, we would estimate that there's a possibility of running three sections at South and two sections at North for AP Environmental Science. There seems to be a great interest in it. Whether or not students can fit that in their schedule, that's to be determined, and who registers for it and things like that, is, those are all separate issues. This past year, we offered our AP Physics course, AP Physics C, just the mechanics section. That was one of those other ones where we stretched out a semester over a year. And we predicted, or projected, I suppose, three sections at South and two sections at North, and that's what happened this year. So, you know, it's hard to say, but that would be our projection at this point in time, yeah, ballpark.
I think this one's going to be more popular than you think, once this gets into books. I think you're gonna, this is a long time coming for my, I'm glad this one's coming through. So I want to thank you for that.
Okay. We hope, we think it's going to be really valuable experience for our students.
I think you're going to be surprised in a year or two from now how many sections you have.
Then that would mean our students are interested in finding value in it, so we're excited about that.
I do, I think this one's going to be, this one's going to be, people have talked about this for a while.
Excellent. Good. Thank you. That's what we hear, so, thank you.
Projected enrollment for Digital Tools and Communication. What we are thinking is at North, two to three sections of it, which is essentially replacing those three current courses that we have. When we take a look at it, we project about two to three sections that we would be getting because we're replacing about two or three sections of those other courses. At South, we're expecting about four to five sections of Digital Tools and Communication, which is approximately what they currently have when you consider keyboarding, computer applications, and emerging technology.
Thanks.
In fine arts, as I mentioned, the Music Theory course is a pretty specialized course. We've never had more than one section at either campus at a time, and we wouldn't project that would change at all with this adaptation.
Thanks.
Questions?
I can say the Math II courses, you know, that would be essentially for all students that will be taking that, so.
Paul was afraid he'd be left out.
I think that one would be full.
Any other questions?
Board is, has no more questions. I would recommend that if you do have additional ones, to contact Gina Zaccardi or me.
Okay.
And we'll get answers for you. These will be brought back to the board at, down to the December 16th meeting.
Okay, we'll discuss this again then.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
In the meantime, can I turn over to Nancy?
Yes, you can. Actually, we can turn the lights on.
Yeah. Okay. Next up is corporate sponsorships.
Okay, I'll start the discussion. The board will recall, several months ago, Mike brought this up as an agenda topic. I believe last month, the board agreed that it wanted to discuss it as an agenda topic, so it is on our agenda this evening. Actually, Mark Stalen and I did some research, and just about, do we have a policy? Well, we don't have a policy about corporate sponsorship, but we have a policy about advertising. And I would say corporate sponsorship is a form of advertising and would be analogous to advertising. So we do have a policy about that. There is an Illinois School Board Association policy about it. That policy is more permissive than ours is. Our policy, and, you're clicking this, Mr. Stalen? Go ahead and click it. Go further.
Our policy?
Right, our policy.
Or do you want to go to the next?
No, this one's good. This is our current policy. And there's some things that advertising cannot do. It can't be disruptive, cannot violate the rights or privacy of others, be deflating or obscene, contrary to the mission of the school district. It can't be about materials that students can't use. It can't be about cigarettes, or wine, or gambling. It's prohibited by political office holders and our candidates for office, and that would be boilerplate with the Illinois School Board Association. Final paragraph talks about some things that we currently allow and do. We have advertising on district control webpages, programs for athletic events, for plays, and basically that's it. Those things are approved by somebody in charge, whether Assistant Principal, Director of Activities, Director of Athletics. If you go down, Mark, could you flip down to the, this would be the, the School Board Association. This allows, or this is a sample policy, as you know, they give us sample policies. But there are other school districts that have these policies, Glenbard being one, Hinsdale being another. They allow advertising on athletic field fences, athletic theater or music programs, student newspapers, yearbooks, scoreboards, or other appropriate locations. And I'm suggesting that this is more permissive than the board's current policy about advertising, because it does identify essentially facilities, capital structures where advertising would be allowed. And I'm presuming that corporate sponsorship would be, could be a lot of different things. It currently is in programs, theater bills and that sort of thing, but if it was going to increase, it would probably be on a facility, or some kind of facility identification. Go back to the front, Mark.
Back to the front?
Okay. Back to the front. So, you know, this is one of those things that the discussion could go in a lot of different directions. It's whatever the board would like it to be. I do perceive that when I joined the district in 2003, the Board of Education at the time, or that, at least as it appeared to me, was not in favor of a lot of corporate sponsorship. I think Mrs. Beckman is the only individual that was on the board in 2003.
Right, and that's true.
And so obviously, it's changed quite a bit. But that was the case in 2003. So I guess the questions are, what changes do we want to consider? That's really a question for the board. There's also a question, I think, about the proceeds, because if we're going to do corporate sponsorship beyond local businesses, and we do a lot of sponsorship, or the local business do a lot, and they're very generous to us in terms of buying those advertisements, supporting our programs and so forth, and nothing I would want to do, the board to do would infringe on that in any way. But moving beyond that to larger, because when I think of corporate sponsorships now, I think of US Cellular Field instead of Comiskey Park, or, you know, things like that. So that's a different, that's a different animal in terms of the amount of resources raised and what that resources would be used for. And so basically, the question's about the changes. We want to consider where the money would go if we received it, and what would be the designated purpose of that money is kind of up for discussion tonight. Is that what you had in mind, Mr. Davenport?
Absolutely.
So are we going to take one topic at a time?
That sounds like a good idea.
I think I kind of laid it out after these.
Right.
Can I ask that we flip that and just, when I think about, were you going to speak?
No.
When I think about corporate sponsorship, I don't necessarily think about advertising. I think about larger corporations giving unrestricted grants, unrestricted education grants is what I'm familiar with, to an organization in response for acknowledgement, not necessarily advert, advert, advertisement. So what would that, what would that mean? That could be the development of something for the schools with, you know, just a little, you know, this was developed with a, this was developed with an unrestricted educational grant from whomever, a little plaque outside a refurbished auditorium, or a science lab that got a piece of equipment, or something like that. I don't necessarily go directly to signage.
I think that's an interesting proposition.
I think that's right. A lot of corporations will underwrite things, just for the acknowledgement, or just because it's something that they believe in, in a certain, maybe, you know, it might be one specific thing, but it's something that they do, and, you know, they use it as tax write-off too.
Yeah, well, tax write-off and goodwill within the community.
Right.
Right.
Do we have any programs like that now, being funded or underwritten, whether it's a science, you know, grant for the study of something, or an amicable education grant? Is there any like that that we've gotten?
I want to say there probably is, but none that come to mind, none that is really prominent that come to mind. I'm, you know, I'm sure all the time our kids get invited to be in events that are sponsored by a corporate sponsor. Our teachers do trainings.
Sure.
But none that's, none that's a really high profile.
And is there rules and policies in place for those to be administered already?
I don't think so. I think the only thing we can find in our policies with regard to this would be the advertisement.
Which would be signage, then?
Well, it could be a lot of different things, but yeah, signage would be one.
That would be the majority, I would think, correct?
Or naming rights.
To a field or a facility?
Which has been restricted thus far.
There's a specific policy about that, about naming rights, right?
What's happening at other schools right now?
I think you mentioned.
I don't know a lot about what's happening in other schools in terms of sponsorship. I know a few things. I do know that there are schools that, well, Mr. Funk, do you mind participating?
Sir.
I spoke to Mr. Funk on the phone today. Steve is a former school board member in District 58. He's also a Downers Grove South parent. And he shared some ideas with me that he had found about, was it Palatine that has a video sign?
Come on up to the microphone, too.
Excuse me, Mr. Funk, can you come up to the microphone so everybody can hear you?
Yeah, it's recorded.
There's lots of schools that have the ability to get corporate sponsorships. They're currently doing it right now. Some schools take it too far, I think, you know, like Frem, I think they, they made $200,000 last year from corporate sponsorships. In our case, I think, you know, you have a chance to take an opportunity to get corporate sponsorships, as long as you manage it well, like you outlined here, you know, what you want to make it. You don't want to give it to Miller Lite, or whatever. Just mainly focus on local businesses, maybe the Ford dealership, you know, on Ogden Avenue or something like that, but just, you know, not really go crazy with it, but there's an opportunity to generate a lot of funds for the students who pay a lot to be on the sports programs. And that's my main concern, is to alleviate some of the pressures that parents have. My daughter yesterday was out selling these gift cards, and she sold 20 of them in like three days. So she got a special shirt for doing so and so. But that's a lot of work for her to do. And I think that, you know, if we had a corporate sponsorship that could generate funds, that would alleviate these, you know, my daughter's an honor roll student, she studies all the time. That took away from her study, because she's out there knocking on doors, "Hi, I'm Laura from the Downers Grove South basketball team, you want to buy this?" You know? So from my standpoint is, you can manage it well, you know, you're a competent board to manage that, and, you know, you can take it as far as you want, but you can be measured how you approach it, you know? Do you want to name the field, you know, Ford Field here, and I don't think you want to do that. But, you know, do you want to offer some, maybe have a, like, not a Jemotron, but some kind of signage that they can, they can put a splur out there saying, hey, you know, you know, "Carrie Ford sponsors Downers Grove South," or, you know, "Bailey Doyle," not Bailey Doyle, but, let me get, let me get back from there, Dairy Queen, you know, Dairy Queen sponsors, you know, "Come and get, you know, after the game, if they score 20 points, come and get a free ice cream cone." Something like that, you know, just not go crazy with it, but you can manage it well currently, what you have, but I think you need to open it up more. And like she said, you know, it isn't really advertising to a certain, it is advertising, but it also, you will be able to find some local places to sponsor, you know, a science lab and give money for that. And then as long as they have a sign up, you know, saying, you know, "So-and-so sponsors this science lab," and so on and so forth. So if you manage it well, I think you can do a lot with it, and you can benefit a lot of students and parents for doing so. So that's my, that's my standpoint, so.
Did you say you noticed it at how many schools?
I can't, you know, I didn't, you know, I'll be honest with you, Al. Let Al speak.
Is that okay, if someone else speaks?
Absolutely. Hi, my name's Al Reginius. I'm the president of the Basketball Boosters, the boys' basketball boosters, and we're, Mr. McDonald, I don't know if you remember, but you and I talked on the phone about this about a year ago. And so we've been, again, getting back to what Mr. Funk said, we feel like we're going back to the same pockets all the time, and it's always 20 bucks here, 50 bucks here, $100 here, and yet we see what's happening in other places, and we go, there's got to be a simpler way. So one of the things, as we've been going to away games with the basketball team, I would say more than 50% of the schools are doing some form of advertising. A lot of it is very low-tech, a banner. If you go to Bowling Brook High School, their scoreboards are paid for and sponsored by Meyer. So there's a big Meyer logo on their scoreboard. Okay, I don't know how much money they made from that, but it's right there. We've all seen so much advertising that we almost don't notice it, but one of the things that we're, we're trying to go for on the boys' basketball team is to put, do it digitally. We want to get a board that we could put on during our games, Subway, Dairy Queen, whatever. The moment our game's done, it's off. And so if the school's kids are going to school, they're having an assembly, whatever, there's not advertisements there. It's only on during our games. And we think if we were, if our basketball team could buy the hardware and put that up on the, on the wall, and it's protected, and you could turn it on and off, there's no reason that the wrestling team and the volleyball teams can't use it for their own benefit. And so I think it's a simple way to kind of not over-commercialize the school, but yet get some, some of that revenue that's out there to, to approach. And so it's happening more and more. We're, we're noticed at least half of the schools, but every year, we go, you go into Frem, two years ago, they didn't have anything. Now they got signs up there, you know, local chiropractor, whatever. So people are moving in that direction. The question is, you know, what's the best avenue for us? And I know putting up placards and taking them down is hard. And I know putting up placards and taking them down is hard, you know, and doing something more high-tech, like a digital board like that, I think would be a win-win for everyone. So, that, that's something that we're hoping to get permission from you guys to say, go ahead and raise funds to, to purchase that, that signage. And, and for us, it was about $15,000 is what they're saying, so we were gonna try to raise the funds to basically purchase that, and, and then go out and sell the ads to put on that during our games.
Thank you.
I think another form of corporate sponsorship in schools that has somewhat lost favor are the exclusive soda pop contracts. And obviously, because of the nutrition issues and the concerns about sugar consumption, soda is a healthy drink, you know, multiple times during the day, is under fire, but back in the 90s, it was not so much, and so, there were sometimes very lucrative exclusive soda contracts, and some school districts received 20, 30, $40,000 a year, or more, depending on how the size.
Well, since, since this was an agenda item that I brought forward, I'll just, I'll, I'll reiterate that reasoning behind it is, is just that there's, we've already got registration fees, athletic fees, so on and so forth, and then we have this additional fundraising that has to go on, and it's a tremendous burden, I think, on our, on our parents, and we're not just talking about athletics, but we're talking about any number of clubs and, and other opportunities we have for our students. So, anything that we can do to help offset those costs, I think, is, is a good thing. To me, though, I, I'm concerned, there needs to be a balance, there's an extent to what we're, what we're willing to do and what we're comfortable with, so soda pop being something just offered, my guess is that that would be something that we would not want to do now. So, there needs to be, there needs to be some, some guidance in all of this, but I know that there's a lot of this going on, as, as we just heard, and I think we're missing out on some opportunities here, that we could be taking care, you know, taking advantage of. One of the things would be to allow for something with a digital sign, or not naming rights on facilities, but, but to have a scoreboard with, that's underwritten cost by somebody, I, I wouldn't have an objection to that. So, I know how I feel about all of this. I know that there was, Mark had explained to me previous, that there's some history here that I wasn't aware of, and Julia, you're, you've got that history, so maybe you could share.
I think, I'm not even sure it, it was a serious discussion of more than a few minutes.
Okay.
Because at the time, it was pretty much advertising, you know, and we really, I think the entire board just did not want, have any part of that. However, as Mark indicated, things changed. I would guess that 10 years ago, there weren't many schools using any kinds of advertising, but things being the way they are, and the economic downturn, and the tax cap, and all that other stuff, it bothers me to think that our students have to go door-to-door selling cards to, to finance their, their sports. So, I, I think it's certainly worth considering. I would personally be much more interested in exploring the sponsorship rather than signs, advertising signs everywhere. There is one school not too far from us that has signs all around their football field, advertising signs, that it's off-putting to me, I'm sure, I don't know how the, apparently the community there feels, it's fine, but I just think the corporate sponsorships would be much more appropriate, and actually might generate more income, if there were something that a corporation, or a local, I would certainly, at least at first blush, this is just off the top of my head, local businesses would sponsor something that really speaks well for them, if like a, a, a science lab, or something that really, that the school really needs, the plaque would be there forever to show that they really were interested in this. I do have a concern, and it was a concern of ours several years ago, too, and I think it was on one of the other slides, who gets the money? Who manages it, and how is it divided, and is it for sports, is it for music, is it for, for academic courses? General Ed, right. So, that's a whole issue that we would really have to take a very serious look at.
And then, who would go out and request the funds?
Mm-hmm.
Is that gonna be a responsibility of the district, or is it booster clubs, or, you know, I mean, that's a general concern, because we really don't have anyone on staff that...
To go solicit funding.
To be a solicitor.
Maybe a educational foundation.
There you go. We're already working on that part, and...
Well, that is true, the foundation.
I think that would be, that's an interest of the foundation, that, just that the foundation is struggling to get a large enough resource base that it could...
Could branch out into that.
Branch out and, and frankly, hire someone for that purpose, with the foundation's funds. But at present, the foundation raises about 20,000 a year, and that's not, that's not gonna hire somebody.
And I think, you know, it's definitely worth exploring, and it's something that we haven't really done before, prior to, you know, the last two years, is rental, you know, policies, in fact, in sense of hiring somebody to do that.
Right.
We never considered that either. I, I think there's multiple opportunities from an educational standpoint, athletic standpoint, a music standpoint, I just don't think that we've been interested enough to look at it, examine it very hard, but I think we're in a position to do that. My biggest concern is individuals taking it too far, whether it's coaches or sponsors, and just maintaining it all for themselves. You know, there, there have been a number of fundraising abuses, in many different ways, in many different schools, I think we want to alleviate that, and I think probably the biggest fight would be who gets what.
Yeah.
And I think it's definitely something we, we should explore, I mean, you know, as a North grad myself, we never paid for our athletic fees, and, and I think that's, you know, that's a burden that I'd like to see go away. Probably the easiest, you know, is, in terms of that fee going away, would be a sponsorship of uniforms. Uniforms are extremely costly, you know, for a small team like gymnastics, it's a minimum of five to eight thousand dollars when they do get new uniforms. So, that's not even basketball, it's not football, it's not volleyball, or some of these, soccer, marching band.
Marching band, right.
If Under Armour sponsored our uniforms, would that be such a bad thing? If we had an exclusive contract with them, they gave us a very, very nice, I don't know to name something, but I, I think it's something worth exploring, to then look at some offsetting ways that we can help our families.
So, I'm really hearing two, two levels of interest here, and it sounds like, it seems to me like most people are interested in that.
I'd like to explore it.
Well, I think pursuing it.
Pursuing, exploring it more, but I'm hearing two levels of interest, and maybe I'm inserting my own bias here, but one would be potentially going out for, to do some kind of grant-seeking opportunities, and other would, where we would look to particularly solicit funds in a certain area. Or, the second would be more of a informal sponsorship, you're interested in supporting the music band, the basketball team, whatever, and, and this is what you will get for that, or how you'll be recognized for that. In either case, you know, we would really have to come up with some very explicit criteria by which we would consider sponsorship, because just like you're saying, you know, well, would we want a beer company? Probably not, but most, most sponsorship opportunities aren't that explicit.
I don't think legally we could have a beer company.
Right.
I mean, I think that's school code.
But if we're a soda company, or, or why would you accept it, or, and, and very explicitly state what it is that people want to get out of this, so...
Well, I, I, to piggyback on that, I think too, we also need to make sure that we're not infringing upon the booster clubs also, because they have a specific role, and, and I don't want to cross over that line either, because they have certain programs, or extra things that they do with their groups, that I don't want to interfere with.
Yeah, we don't go for the same pocket. Rob Peter to pay Paul.
Well, yeah, but it, it also goes back to who gets the funds, you know? If they're gonna solicit funds, are, is it their funds, or is it gonna go into a, a general fund?
That would be equally distributed.
I might, I might say that what I see happening is, is us taking a look at our policy again, and, and possibly expanding our policy to allow for some things to happen with the facilities. Administrative regulation that, that might kind of hone down a little bit more on some of the, some of the details and the, you know, feet-on-the-ground sort of things that happen with all this. And facilitation of, of these things by staff, so that we can avoid some of that stepping on the toes stuff that we're concerned about.
Right, because, you know, those are, those are very important people in, in our school lives, and, and we don't want to hurt, hurt their feelings, or...
Absolutely, so, there has to be some coordination of this, and in an understanding on, you know, if this is something we want to see happen, that, that our, our, our parents know that it's something that we're supporting, and, and our administration doing, you know, their best to, to support that and help that get implemented. So, there's some coordination, I think, that, well, especially, especially at South, where we have multiple clubs, and I don't see that changing anytime soon, so, not trying to offer commentary on that, but anyhow, that does create a situation where there needs to be some coordination that happens, and, and I'm sure that there is a good amount going on right now, but I think policy change, some adjustment to policy, adjustment to administrative regulation if necessary, and, and then, and we see where it goes.
And a lot of times, if, if, just throw this in there, too, is if individuals want to make a donation to some of these causes, they go through the foundation, and their corporate entity that they work for matched the, some of those funds, many times, so, you know, they may not be able to do it directly to a public institution, they would have to go through the foundation to do that.
So, it sounds like, I'm sorry.
I mean, it's, so it's, it's a lot more complicated sometimes than just, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I'm sorry. So, it sounds like everybody, did you have anything you wanted to add, Deb?
No, 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 I'm, I'm quite interested in pursuing it and, and looking at it.
So, everyone's interested in pursuing this, I think it's, there's gonna be a lot of work ahead with this. Is this something that the policy committee can look at? Is this something we need a separate, separate group to look at?
I'm wondering, not that I want to make any more work for the administration, but if there, an administrative committee could be formed at some point, whenever you've got the time for it, that would include people from the boosters, people from the community, people from corporations. I don't know how it would work, but it would be a cross-functional sort of ad hoc committee. And Mark, how do you feel about that, off the top of your head? You don't need to comment on it right now.
Well, I think setting up a group, including the boosters at both schools, might be a helpful thing. Now, corporate, that's a different animal.
I didn't know that, I just threw that out as an, as an idea, but, but just members of the community.
That's a different animal, because that, that's, that's more almost the foundation-type person.
Okay.
I think the boosters is a good way to go.
Yeah, uh-huh.
I think it depends, though, I mean, because you, you could have a corporate sponsorship of a music situation, or an athletic situation, or a science situation, I mean, I, I can see, I, I honestly think that a pol, I think the policy route is probably the first way to go, because you can't have a committee decide anything based on a policy that they can't abide by.
That's true.
And I think if we're gonna have a committee, it should have, obviously, the booster clubs, and when you mentioned that, Terry, I thought was a good point, because I think if we don't have one central person, like a rental facility person, I almost envision the, the booster clubs working in tandem with, with the school district, in seeking those opportunities. Now, what you've done is, is lifted the restrictions for them to kind of go seek these types of funds, or investigate it on their own, whether it, it applies to just one specific program, hopefully the entire scope of all our athletic programs, I think that would be ideal, but I, I think the policy aspect probably would want to come first, and then this committee, and the committee would have to be, I think, diverse within our schools, whether it's activities, music, athletics, academic, as well as booster clubs and other community organizations, I think would probably be the route.
And the foundation definitely have a seat at that table, because they're, they're the perfect conduit for some of these corporate sponsorships that we're talking about.
So, they might have those connections already, too.
Yeah.
At least a phone number to call.
Yeah.
We have a gentleman, Mr. Funk?
There's one more comment, my last comment.
This, this year in May, we, we did something with the Dodge test drive event, and the speech club, baseball team and the basketball, we got, we got people to come right here in the parking lot, and they test drove vehicles, okay? We got like, how much, 20 bucks?
We got 20.
20 dollars for each test drive. We raised, and then each one that came said they were, I want to be with the speech team, I want to be baseball, so whoever that 20 dollars went, it went to that team, so, and it was, it was coordinated very well, I mean, it was pretty smooth, pretty easy, and, you know, we made like about 1,600 hours, the basketball boosters. Speech made a lot more money, I don't know why, but they had something going on, you know, basketball was over.
Got the word out.
Yeah, maybe that's it, but, but basketball was over already, so, you know, but anyway, look at it, we just had people show up, sign, you know, and Dodge gave us that money, and it was clean, you know, and we gave the money to the district, and Randy managed the money for us, you know, and then he, he gave us the money back, you know, and we spent it on our uniforms, as a matter of fact, so, so, I mean, it worked out very well, it was smooth, it was clean. I like your idea about having committee, though, I think you definitely need to have something like that to foster, you know, everyone on the same page, you know, so, you know, but we shared the money equally, and then we figured out a way to make it work, so, okay?
Interesting.
That's a good point, because I, I don't think there's any set way to approach it, I think there's just so many different avenues that we could go, because it's gonna be unique, and it's gonna be tailored to what our values are in the district.
Yes, but I don't want them to go hog wild.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's the scary part, so...
Yeah, that's why we'd want some definite...
Well, defining what hog wild is, right? I mean, that's, I mean, we mentioned the, the advertising across, you know...
Around a field, yeah.
Well, obviously, in that community, it's not an issue. I don't know, I don't know if it's an issue here or not.
I don't know either, I know it's my own bias, that's just me, that's right.
So, kind of figuring out, you know, where those things are at, I think is, is a task at hand as well.
Well, I'm sure the policy committee would look at other policies, and what other, you know, best practices.
Sounds like she's trying to make work for it.
I would actually, I would actually suggest that we, I like your idea about having an administrative committee to talk about this, and maybe put some parameters, put a little fence around this, better define it. Ultimately, we're gonna have to have a policy.
Right.
Specifically defining it, but I think there, there's so many different ways this could go, and there are so many different levels of sponsorship we, we could seek or be open to, that it might be good just to have some, kick it around a little bit, and better define it before the policy committee tries to tackle it.
It's a mentor from other people, too, other groups. Would you say our policy is constraining, though, like, as you read it right now, in comparison with, say, IASB? I think it is, yes.
Absolutely, yes.
In that one sense, but as far as what we can do with our advertising, I think that part is pretty explicit. I don't know that you want to put too many other restrictions, because I, I don't know where this is gonna go. You know, general restrictions against, you know, these types of companies, or this form of that, because we have that now.
Well, I think the other thing you have to think about, so, I'm sorry, Mike, what were you gonna say?
I was gonna say that, that I think that, looking at the ISB recommendation is a good, good thing, as we look at so many other things, and adopting that, that verbiage makes some sense to me, and then when we start talking about some of that Coke or not Coke, or whatever, those things are maybe handled a little bit more at the administrative level, in terms of procedures, and that's when, that's when, you know, some of the nitty-gritty gets worked out, so...
Because my, my fear is, if you get an administrative committee, they're gonna be maybe bogged down just in signage, or they might be bogged down in this aspect, and there might be some things that we didn't even think of it, that we're losing ourselves, like we're, we're short-siding ourselves on, and that's, I don't want to waste their time, and, and I'd rather just kind of move forward with some things, and, and take it as it comes.
I would, will, will say that in my experience, when seeking corporate funding for research and educational programs, we had a, they called it the sponsor, corporate sponsorship committee, so before you went out to seek funds, you would actually have to review that organization, very often it was, you know, a pharmacy company or whatever, and they would do due diligence to see, was there any negative press, were there any products that we would not, because we did not endorse, were there any products that we would not support? I mean, it was a really pretty, an exhaust, an exhaustive process to make sure that this was somebody we wanted to be associated with, and in addition, you know, if you have, one group comes and says, you know, I'd like to provide whatever, so we can, but I'd like to provide whatever, and you have another group come that says, well, we'd like to provide... group come that says, well, we'd like to provide whatever. I mean, there's a lot of intricacies involved with this.
I think we have those controls now in the sense that we do approve, or it follows a chain of command, if you will, wherever it originates, and administration always has an eye over it, but then field trips come before us, textbook adoption comes before us, all these things get approved. I think that chain of command, if you have those certain parameters saying, look, we investigated, we feel that this, you know, we made some overtures, they came back, they're interested, and we've done our due diligence after, you know, these requests, and we'd like to recommend it to the board, I think that would be entirely appropriate as well, so.
Well, let me put the question then to Mike and Rick, since we're giving them some work. Would you like to have the opportunity to get a little more feedback about potentially what this all could involve before you go forward to try to construct some sort of policy for our review, or do you feel you've got a good enough handle on to go?
Actually, I don't think it's necessary. I mean, I think ISB has put together some good language, and this is what most boards are adopting, and we pay money, you know, for this advice. So, to me, this seems like a good place, a good place to...
Bring it up into policy.
Yeah, to start, and we may want to look at some nuances with this, but I think we need to, we should just start here, and then if we feel in our group that we need more, then we can go that, go that way.
And I think Mark should maybe talk to some people, too, the other, just to see what their feelings are on this, you know, the other, the boosters, and are they for it, and what do they kind of see, what do they see this encompassing, as far as what their vision is a little bit.
I don't think it would hurt to look at other districts who are also using the advertising and different aspects of it, to find out exactly what their policy is, because I'm not sure that they're using, I mean, we don't know for sure that they're using this policy.
I think some of them are.
Some of them are, but maybe some of them are doing something different, and it wouldn't hurt to look and see what those are.
No, I agree with you, Terry, but like all the policies that we review from IASB, or as most of them, this is, there is legal...
Ramifications.
Well, it's, most of them are grounded in...
Court decisions.
...territory law or common law. And, for example, there are clearly things in the policy that must be there. We can't, there are certain things we cannot advertise for in schools.
Oh, well, yeah.
Makes sense, right.
And probably most of it. The permissive part is not what we don't allow, it's what we do allow. And that's probably going to be just about every place.
Okay.
I'll just tack on, only because we had this conversation today, and we have, and I was in the committee when we first put this policy in place, and it was a more conservative mindset at that time, and we were happy to put that into policy as the board wanted at that time. I think it is a good idea to look at these other sources. The devil will be in the details of how we regulate, because the ISB policy is very preventive, and actually, even political signage is okay if the board wants it. It's not a law, but it's just how they frame it. We could reverse that, but back to this issue, I think there's two areas, I think, we'll really have to work as a policy committee, making sure we do put some guidelines in there, because if we just say, the ISB policy allows this now, and go ahead, boosters, I think we'll have a big problem, only because it's not just the boosters, the boosters and the foundation do and may very likely overlap on some levels, and now if we just go down to the booster level, we can get into inequity, and that's why I put that last line, we can get into equity issues between programming at the two buildings, because the boosters are formed completely different, as you mentioned.
Right.
The North may allocate a certain money that they get for putting signs on the stadium at North to all of their teams, and the ones at South may, well, the baseball team got some sponsors, and they want that money just to come to their team, and now you may have, the kids at North have to do, still do fundraising for their uniforms, and so there's going to be a lot of little pieces to this.
Exactly.
In our own district, but not looking at other schools, where we have to just deal with some of these pieces. And so I think that'll be what we have to talk about in policy, and make sure we, and one thing I was looking for, too, from this, because I kind of felt that, being the money guy, I would hopefully have my fingers in this somehow, is what are we focusing this on? Are we trying to reduce the fundraising? Because that'll make it a lot simpler. If the board has a consensus on what we want the money to do, other than let's just generate money and put it in a pot, and then it'll go to good, because we know it will, but that's what the foundation could do as well. So if we're going to replace a district responsibility now in terms of a financial obligation, such as no more fundraising for boosters, because we're going to work hard to find and make a pot big enough to eliminate that, then I think that needs to be stated so we can have kind of a target. I know that puts parameters on it, that, or is it going to be to reduce that fee, or is it going to be for the science labs, or some project, something? Because this way, if we limit it to athletics, which is very possibly where to start, we probably won't get into those other areas, like a science lab, unless we make that policy clear what the focus of the money is to be for, and what we're supposed to be replacing. Because the policy is so broadly written, that it'll be in the administrative rags where we get into, where we really get, but we need to, we have a good, clear idea what the board's intent is when we do this, and that's what the policy will have to, and that's the process. I'm just saying, I'm just laying it out. I think that's what we're going to be doing, and I think that's a good thing for us to do.
Well, I like that. Personally, I'd like to see a very broad application here, and I'm not sure what the limits and what the possibilities are. I do know I want a policy in place that allows for all those possibilities, and as maybe a segue to some of our future conversation here, you know, we just came home from our conference, the balcony sort of view here. You know, we want to have policy that allows for a lot of possibilities with some parameters, and I think that this ISB policy is going to do that for us. It's in the details, in the administrative regulation.
For sure.
How you implement some of the intent behind the policy and what our desires are as a community. That's where the details get worked out.
And the question, will we, do we, like, for corporate sponsorship, do we want to assign corporate sponsorship to any particular booster? Right for them to put things on our facility, or are we going to, or should the district retain that?
Right.
And that's the questions we'll be working through.
I'd also like to make the point that even currently, their fundraising, there are breaks in the system. For example, there is no athletic department fundraising that's not approved by the athletic director. There's no fine arts or theater fundraising that's not approved by the activity director.
Right.
So, and I would venture to say, there's, there have been some really good ideas that those individuals have not approved, because for one reason or another, saying they don't, it's not a worthwhile purpose for the funds, or they don't need the funds, or we're not doing it just to raise money, period. So I, you know, we already have that break on the system.
And that would continue.
That would continue.
Although I would, you know, as a board member, I can tell you, you know, trying to be a can-do sort of person, the idea of just saying, no, can't do that, for whatever reason, I'd hope that we could try to steer that, though, into a positive, have you, you know, to give suggestions, you need a better purpose for these funds, or you might want to work with somebody else, as opposed to just shutting it down. So, and this is an overarching philosophy in some of what we're talking about here, is that we like, I'd like to see, you know, the facilitation of these things, and the encouragement of these things, within reason, and we need to figure out what that...
What the reason is.
What that reason, right, overall. So, I really appreciate the discussion, and so going forward?
Going forward, then, what I guess I'm hearing is we will send this back to the PNP committee, we'll ask you to draft something up, maybe we can have another workshop related to this, because I think there's going to be a lot of discussion. And frankly, since it's new ground for us, we should give everybody an opportunity to poke friendly fire at it, and that's probably not a good analogy, but you know what I mean? Poke holes in it, say, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? What are we going to do if this happens? So that you can go back and do more work with those thoughts in mind.
I think so.
And I would also say, and the reality is, if we're going to involve a lot more people in this process, it's going to take a while.
Right.
It won't be done by December 16th.
Oh, no.
Policy committee might have this...
December, I thought December 8th we were having a special meeting.
Right, it's been a great discussion, and, you know, if we were, some of the thoughts that I kind of heard around the board is, I mean, if they started out with something that was more maybe athletically based, or something like, the only thing that worries me that we might have to talk about some more is that North and South are so different in the way that they are structured, booster-wise. And so then if you're going to have a committee and how it's going to go forward, it's either going to be, when we're looking at the, you know, how equitable everything is going to be, do we want both schools then, you know, to be the same, meaning, I mean, are we going to be able to keep all the boosters at South and only one booster at North, or does, you know, does either school have to change its structure to go forward into making things more equitable? I mean, it's just something else to look at, because you have to start, you know, a little bit at the bottom, too.
Mm-hmm.
You know, basic layer.
There are many layers to this discussion, for sure, many layers.
So you'll let us know when you're ready to go forward, as the policy and procedure committee?
We will.
We'll schedule some time to really talk about this in depth, and we'll go from there. And I'd like to thank the gentlemen...
Yes, thank you.
...for coming, who came for coming. It's wonderful to have community members come to... You know, you did your little corporate sponsorship plug, it was still a good thing.
Well, we've been...
Bring the Dodgers back.
Looking for guidance on this over a year, and the one response we get is that the school board needs to give us guidance before we can give you guidance, and so we're hoping that this doesn't drag on for a whole lot longer. There's a lot of opportunities out there, and frankly, it's tiring.
Sure.
I mean, for us, we're working on stuff every day of the week, either selling concessions or doing whatever, and it's the same, that same...
Right, we have been there, done that.
It's the same, it's over and over, and there's got to be an easier way. So, I like that you guys are discussing this, that you're pursuing it, I just ask you, please don't drag it on for too long. It's something that has to happen.
We had the freshman tournament this week, and the first time we were able to charge money for entry, and we made sixteen hundred dollars, which was huge. Every other school we go to has been charging entry fees.
Yeah.
We finally did it, and we made sixteen hundred dollars. I mean, it's great, you know, and then we sold about eight hundred hours in our concessions, so, I mean, it works out well for the kids, because that money goes right to them.
Yeah, exactly.
Is there something you gentlemen think that we've missed in our conversation or discussion as far as...
I think the best thing would be if you gave us a clear-cut definition of what we can do and what we can't do, is all we're looking for.
It's not really that what's really, I mean, you guys are pulling down, I think, you got some people as board members who can do that, so I understand how it works. But you're drilling down, but just understand that we made it work with Dodge, we had no problems. We had three different, you know, we're local, we, our boosters differently, and we understand that, but we liked the way we were running our boosters here, and we worked well with each other's entities, you know, baseball works well with speech and so on, and we ran the event clear, no problems, you know? We got our money, we all shared it equally, everyone that showed up for speech got their speech money, and baseball got their baseball money, and basketball got their basketball money.
Good idea.
It was simple, it was clean. And we got the money, and we're fine, you know? And that's, it's simple to do, I mean, it's simple to manage, as long as you guys have some clear requirements, you know? Randy worked very well with us, with the Dodge event, and that's why it worked out well. So, I mean, you can do it, and it's not going to take six months and all that.
You've already done it. You've already done the one thing...
No, I'm not trying to say we've already done something already, so we can start tomorrow, just need approval from you guys to go further.
But is there something in particular, though, that you think you want to do that you're...
Well, he mentioned the billboard, the digital signage.
The digital signage, you know, we can get probably, most of our boosters will contribute towards the fifteen thousand dollars cost.
Okay.
Well, let me give you another example.
You know, I really appreciate it, but we do have to move on, I'm sorry. And believe me, we feel your pain about digital signs.
I'd also, I'd also...
We're very grateful to have you here.
Dr. Cuppy, I'd also say, there are, and I much appreciate the gentlemen coming and presenting tonight.
There are others.
But there are other people who have a dog in this fight, and they're not here to talk either.
Right.
So, I think we need to start, I mean, we will work hard to get this done. It won't be done by December 16th, no. There are other people who have to, before, and I, you know, love to give them the go-ahead to do what they want to do, but there are people who have to weigh in on this or aren't here to talk about it.
That's true.
I think the athletic...
Athletic directors.
I did reach out to North Boosters and told them we were having this meeting today, and we're here, so.
So, thank you, gentlemen.
I'm going to try to get this out to everyone that you're doing.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry I had to cut you off. Thanks so much. I'm sure we'll talk again.
Do come back.
It's nice to have visitors.
Okay, so, moving on, we were going to talk about reports from the IASB, IASA, IASBO annual conference. So we're just going to go around the table and ask people to give just a brief summation of anything they found interesting or helpful or whatever, and, you know, I'm going to put you on the spot. Can we start with Mr. Stalen, because I know you were there?
Oh, okay. I thought you were just going to push the board members, and I'm not necessarily prepared, but I can say the one that was most important to me was the pension discussion, or I guess it was Senator Biss and Representative Singer were there, and having just seen the first draft of what is the potential new language, they're pretty far off from what they said was absolutely going to happen.
Oh, gee.
And there was definitely going to be a push-down to the district costs, but I haven't seen that yet.
That wasn't in it.
And what came out yesterday, or over the weekend, is the tentative language to be settled on. But that was the one that was most interesting, I think, and there was a lot of pushback, because there's question and answers at the end, and there was a lot of pushback on forcing the cost down to the buildings, and the argument of Senator Biss was, well, if the schools pick up this additional cost, then the state will have more money to be able to give them full funding for state aid and the other things. And, of course, the argument back is, they should be doing the state aid anyways, that's not something, you know, if you give us the full state aid, then, you know, it's just taking out of another pocket, is all they're saying, and so they don't have the money. The reason I would want them to hold on to that liability and that obligation and pay for it, and that push it down to the schools, is because the state aid is something that I think most people in the state would get behind, they should be funding state aid at the right level, regardless of whether they pay us or force us to pay that additional cost or not. So, there would still be pressure on them if they accepted this liability that they have, and worked that into the budget, and also worked the priority of state funding, because they're really just, they've been reducing everybody's budgets over the last years. And that was probably the main one I liked.
Thank you. Did you call this here? No. Mike?
Yes?
Can I just say, for the record, I had a longstanding family event that was long planned, and so I was not in attendance.
But we missed you.
Understood, we missed you.
And it's understood. And we appreciate your service, independent of not being in attendance.
Well, I'll have to work from memory, because I apparently walked out with a couple of my notes, so, without, so, nice, huh? Anyhow, I went down Friday morning and attended a day-long workshop on school board finance, or school district finance, and it was a similar workshop that I had taken a couple of years ago when I first joined the board, only now I actually know what a lot of those acronyms mean, and could follow along some, and a couple takeaways on that. One was that they recommended that you have your, the auditor come and give a presentation once a year, when they're putting the audit together, or to report out on the audit, that that was a good idea, as opposed to having that go through the, your chief financial person. And it seems that that's something that a lot of districts do, so that's something we might think about doing. Something timely in our discussion about the... Something timely in our discussion about the levy, I discovered that the state establishes your need for that general state aid based on your ability to levy.
That's right.
And if you decide not to levy to the inflation, CPI, then it doesn't, you're still getting what you were going to get from the state either way. So, the state is calculating how much money you're going to get, assuming that you're going to
levy.
Tax, you know, to the full levy amount. And if you don't, then too bad for you. So, that's something to keep in mind when we look at that. Another interesting, two other, just, most of my workshops on Saturday were also finance-related. And I stayed over for the first time, and this is the third time going for me. Stayed over for Sunday and was really glad I did. I attended a workshop Sunday morning on the role of a school board member wearing, you know, when you're wearing the board hat and when you're wearing the parent hat. Which was really interesting for me. Because it is something, you get in, you're having a conversation with a teacher or, one of the, one of the things that came up was how it affects our spouses, because our roles are pretty defined. I mean, we, there are things that you can say, this is appropriate to talk about now and this isn't appropriate to talk about now. But when it comes to our spouses, significant others, there's this perception, you know, from the public side, that our spouses somehow have privileged information or if they're expressing an opinion, that that might be your opinion. And it really, this is something that really is kind of tough on our spouses sometimes, too. And I imagine that would be the same for many elected offices and the people involved, so. And the last general session was by Earl Morse. He was the fellow that organized the honor flights, started out of Wright-Patterson Air Force Base in Dayton. There wasn't a dry eye in the place. Just incredible work that these folks are doing. And as I was sitting and listening to the stories and reflecting back on our Veterans Day programs here at District 99, thinking that there might be an opportunity next year, maybe to raise some money, maybe interest some of the students in getting involved in these honor flights. The World War II veterans are not going to be around a whole lot longer. And so, time's running out, and there's also a lot of Korean War veterans and Vietnam veterans that they, that they're Gulf War veterans that they're also helping, fellows that are, and gals that are on the, you know, have a terminal illness and don't have a whole lot of time, they get moved to the front of the line. And it's just really, really, I can't say enough great things about what this group is doing. So, that was really moving and I enjoyed that. And if that's the caliber of our, of the Sunday morning sessions, might want to consider joining me next year. And I did take away, I have several things, I wasn't going to report out on everything, but I was going to put together a little report of things because I think there's several actionable items that I pulled out of some of the sessions I went to that we could consider at various points during the year as appropriate. So, I'll get that to you. And I'll pass it along to my esteemed colleague.
All right, well. Actually, if you would send it to Joanne, we'll send it around everywhere.
Yeah.
I'll do.
Super. Okay, well, I attended a few interesting sessions and one, I mean, you know that I'm the delegate to the assembly. So, things there went basically without a hitch after we had reviewed everything and they went pretty much according to the agenda. Although there was one interesting, and it was on, oh, and I should say, too, that the old president was Carolyn Brooks and we do now have a new president that we had voted in and her name is Karen Fisher. Okay, there was three hundred and ninety-five delegates smushed into that ballroom with our little paddles, yes, and, you know, yea and nay for all of these items that were on here. We did have one interesting position I wanted to bring back to you, and that was, it was about curricular material determination. And it read like this, "The Illinois Association of School Boards shall support the rights and responsibility of each local school board to determine its curricular content, including opposing any mandated curriculum that comes from the Common Core standards." And the position of the delegates was to, you know, to support this position. And it was very interesting, this was the closest vote. They pulled it off of the agenda and wanted it voted on, you know, separately and everything. And it got, I wouldn't want to say heated, but it did get a little lively. There were some even of our bigger schools like Naperville and Wheaton who did not support this based on the fact that they thought that they did not like the way that this was worded. It was just a verbiage thing for them, that they liked the old IASB verbiage on it better that did not include that position statement about the Common Core standards because they felt that that was something that they have incorporated into the schools very much like we have and that they felt that they were doing great things with the Common Core curriculum. Even though it was mandated, they had already been doing things and that this gave sort of a, you know, sort of a position statement that meant sort of underlying tone that we didn't really support these, you know, these mandates. So, they, it wasn't that really at all, it was, but they just didn't like the verbiage. So, they ended up having to do a recount on this because of course it's just the paddles. And the current president said, "Okay, it passed." Well, then somebody got up and they called the question, they wanted it voted by hand. So, we had to wait there and redo it. It wasn't as close as they thought. I mean, seriously, it was like two hundred and ninety to, you know, like a hundred or something. But I guess, you know, when you're holding up your paddles and when you're sitting there, it might have looked like it was closer than it was to the people who were sitting on the opposite side. So, that was rather interesting. And then I did sit on one more, and that was, well, I said a couple more, but I went to one that was IHSA. So, it wasn't, you know, a educational one, so to speak, it was more of an extracurricular. They talked about things like conference realignments, which is really not very favorable to our IHSA.
Marty Hickman?
Yeah, it was, no, it was, yeah, it was Marty and Rick.
Marty, yeah.
And they talked about how the state championship football games were not going to be at the University of Illinois anymore at Memorial Stadium because that contract had run out, now they're going to be at Northern Illinois University. They talked about some changes in basketball. There were going to be some changes in how the game is going to be played at the high school level, it's going to be a much less physical game. They're taking, yeah, there's, yeah, there'll be more finesse in there. There was also some talk about recruiting issues, especially when it came to the prokeo schools. So, yeah, exactly, there are incentives that are given to athletes. They were actually saying that that actually happens in the public schools, too. Not to be kidding ourselves that that actually does happen. They have no answer to that, but they don't, at this particular time, want to separate the tournaments at this point. There's been some talk about that. They will be doing, looking at some other things to accommodate that. Private schools, they mentioned some of them, I don't need to mention them, but they're looking at changing the levels that they're playing. They're looking at changing the transfer rules, playing up a certain, to a certain level, so they are looking at a few things. They also, what I thought was kind of interesting to us is that we had incorporated lacrosse. And that is a meeting, and I believe that they were actually having their meeting today, if I'm not mistaken, December second. I could be wrong on the date, but it was in December. And they were not certain that lacrosse would be an IHSA-sponsored sport, yet. So, and they did not, they didn't think that it was going to go that way.
Does that mean they would have a state tournament in lacrosse?
That they, that they.
They say it's sponsored?
That they would not, correct, right. And that they were also looking at something that Iowa just did, and that was moving high school baseball more toward the summer now. That it would be pushed, that would be pushed, that would be pushed back now toward the summer.
Well, the weather's pretty heavy sometimes.
Right, and Iowa, Iowa, I guess, has done this and they are very happy with this. That their track, their spring teams are really separated out then from that baseball. And then they brought up the boys gymnastics, I guess, boys gymnastics right now in participation is not very high at this point, and that's teetering, actually, on the brink of being.
Eliminated?
Yeah.
They've been saying that for years.
Have they?
The same number of programs, same number of participants. There's a big, as a former coach, there are so many, when you have an emerging sport, it's usually in the spring and it's crowding out gymnastics. So, they're almost looking for an excuse, in my opinion, to say, "Oh, we have lacrosse, let's get rid of gymnastics."
Yeah, it's interesting. But that, that's what I heard, so I thought I would bring that back, so some just interesting, interesting stuff, yeah.
Well, I attended on Saturday and I, the first session I went to was with Mike and it was on board policy. And it was kind of nice to hear how to do it, why to do it, and how to accomplish it. And it's kind of, I think, we were definitely doing a lot of the right things here, which was kind of good to hear, being a new person walking into that. And the second one I went to, I also went to the IHSA, because for the first time, as a coach and competing at the state level, they don't like to be asked questions. And I went just because they, on the, it said, "You can ask questions." I said, "This is history in the making." From a coach standpoint, and I've seen, being in the state competitions and winning and it was refreshing to actually see them answer questions for a change, because they're not the most receptive organization. So, I stepped in there just to witness the questions, and they were good questions.
I was just going to say that they got peppered with a lot of questions.
That's right, and it'll be interesting to see next year if they take questions. Because it was, it was enlightening. I'm not coaching anymore, but it was, it was kind of. I really enjoyed it.
I hit on a couple of those without going too far, but yeah, they got peppered.
Yeah. And so, that was it. So, yeah, I enjoyed it. I, like I said, those were the sessions I kind of focused on, and the policy one was for, because I'm on the policy committee, so.
Great, thank you. Julia?
Let me go. I, my attendance was abbreviated as well because I had to attend an event that my granddaughter was in. But I did get to a couple of the general sessions and I went to the legislative issue sessions, which I tend to do every year, and it's kind of the same thing every year. The school, the room is full, packed with school board members and administrators who are angry. And they ask lots of angry questions and the legislators just have to sit there and take it. There were four legislators there and it was chaired by Calvin Jackson from IASBO, who moderated it. And the basic, they did talk about a lot of other issues besides the pension, but that was a big issue. But they talked a lot about how helpless they feel sometimes. You know, they're just one of many legislators and they really felt that they need to hear from constituents, which is the message I bring back to us. I'm glad we're members of Lend, I think that Lend needs to hear from us as much, but we also need to individually get to our legislators and tell them how much we care about the issues. Senator, Representative Bertino Tarrant talked about how we need relief from mandates, and in my time on the board, we've said that every year, that we need relief from particularly unfunded mandates. And mentioned that most of them are federal, and so even the state doesn't have a lot to do about getting out from under them. They're all very well-intentioned, but they really do put a lot of burdens on us. She also felt, which I was glad to hear, that our life safety funding needs some kind of help and we've been saying that ever since the beginning of the tax cap, that we need a little more leeway to raise money for the mandated life safety improvements that we have to do every ten years. And so far, we have not gotten that relief, but I think she would give us some support on that. And of course, one of the other, I believe it was one of the state senators talked about how the formula, the school aid formula needs to be redone, that tends to come up every year. But we need to look at it very, very carefully. He felt it was very inequitable, but I tended not to agree with him. Some of that inequity is because the poorer districts have to get more state aid, that's just how that works. But there were, it was interesting, there was a lot of different opinion just among the four of those people, which tells you what they're up against in the legislature with all the different opinions. But once again, as I said, there were a lot of angry board members in the room who just, we all feel really pressured and really put upon. But that's my message for all of us, that we should talk to our legislators as much as we can.
Well, I went to a couple of sessions and they were so full that I couldn't even get in. It was really a shame, but it goes to show you, we really do need to do the joint conference thing.
Mandated sessions.
Yes, because those were so full, it wasn't even worth it. So, I did pick up a couple of brochures, though, on a couple of things I wanted to see, and that was recruiting board candidates. That was a nice panel. And I have the overviews of it, but I went in on some decision-making processes. You know, how we as a board can develop trust and communication with each other. And that was a very interesting one. And then I also dropped in on District 68 was presenting and was a spotlight school. So, I did want to drop in and see that. And that was very interesting, and some of the things that they're doing to to create a better environment for their students and to make them more ready for high school and for college. So, that was a very interesting one, and I thought it was nice that we supported District 68, too.
Helps us out, too.
Yes.
I went to a number of sessions on lobbying the legislature, predicting what the legislature was going to do with the pensions. And then I attended the one that Julia discussed. My takeaway, I understand the frustration. I was somewhat disappointed that, that some pretty clear-cut issues, that they weren't ready to reveal a position. For example, the requirement for certified nurses. That's problematic for a number of reasons. One, the districts would, the small districts would have to be able to pay salaries of those personnel, they don't exist, there aren't schools in the state that are churning them out at a level that they could serve all the schools, and yet I don't think any of the four had a position.
No, you're right.
And that was part of the frustration of people in the audience, that at least they have a position, you know?
That's a good point. They acted powerless.
Yes, that was disappointing. I was impressed by the first two general sessions. They were very much futuristic and their, and the two presenters were very much futuristic, both in terms of the role of instructional technology and the direction it's going and also what, you know, what our students think about, what they're really going to have to know, what an educated person is going to be like in the future or needs to be like in the future. I thought that was fascinating from that, from the perspective, and I was also encouraged because I think we're going in those directions in many ways. So, that was encouraging.
Thank you. I did, I took some of my mandatory training sessions. I did attend a, and I'll give Joanne the slides. A presentation on legal issues concerning safe and healthy schools, who really talked a lot about intervention, both preventative and responsive intervention to specific safety threats from students and from people outside of the school. It was very disheartening, in fact. I attended a session on what's new in employment and labor law. They talked about some of the new requirements and how those are really being, broke it down into some usable English. So, we'll distribute those as well. But what I found most interesting was actually what I learned in formal conversations and while waiting in line at the ladies' room from other people who were attending the program. And that was, you know, we are way ahead of the game. We have, thanks to our passports, our Kern Board, our administrative staff, our teachers, we are way ahead of what I heard other people's talking about in terms of whether it's the institution of the core curriculum, whether it's our financial reporting. I went to a two-and-a-half-hour session on financial reporting. I thought Mark Stalen would knock them out of the room. It was just amazing. In talking with just the board, you know, we have our little picadillos amongst us and we have our little problems, but we really function quite well, and when I hear some of the stories from other boards about some of the problems their boards face. boards face, I mean, how do you get people to come to graduation?
What?
How do you get people to, how do you get board members to come to graduation? To, to out and out catfights, to, just, it's, just, we're really well functioning. And I would again say, you know, it's just kind of nice to hear because you always think your family's the most dysfunctional until you get out in public. So thank you all for attending and even people who couldn't attend. You know, this is again, a.
You do what you can do.
You do what you can do. It's all you can do. And this is a voluntary position and we appreciate your time. And this was, again, people's time away from other responsibilities. And, you know, it's greatly appreciated that people went. I think it sounds like people got something out of it.
Really?
And then I would like to add one thing, and I didn't, I didn't mention this, but after Julie and you were talking and, and Mark going to those, the legislative issues. Well, let me tell you that I, I went to one and it was called From the Schoolhouse to the State House. And it was Sandy P. Hoes and Pat McGuire and Rita Mayfield, people who are now sitting either as a state rep or a state center who were board members. And so I'm going to just make a little plug, okay, that maybe what we really need to solve some of those, because there's nothing more important, right, than educating our children, right? And the biggest news in Illinois are what? It's pension, right? It's school funding. It's evaluations of our teachers that are teaching our children and, and the implementation of core curriculum, correct? Those are like the really hot issues in the state of Illinois even. So maybe we should be supporting more school board members in those pivotal roles that are in Springfield at this point. And then maybe, just maybe, when we, when we attend things like this, we'll have state legislators who will actually know what positions they want to take that will actually enhance public education in our state and solve some of these problems. So a plug for, I think that some of, some of our, our board members, whether here or in other of our sister schools or whatever, would make very, very fine candidates for state reps and state senators with some of the background knowledge and amount of time that we've spent on these issues. So anyway, it was a very interesting panel.
Okay, moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Parking lot? Okay, this is my, this, this is my baby.
Right. And make sure that, you know, nobody in the public thinks that we're talking about paving a new parking lot.
No, we're not talking about pavers.
No car is involved.
No cars involved.
So from time to time, we have come up with ideas as, as we're having a discussion that really deserve further discussion. Just in today, I heard things, we talked about having an auditor doing a presentation to the board. We talked again about the joint conference. And then of course, my personal, again, throwing in my personal plug, adding increasing health and safety of, of students to our strategic initiatives. And we talk about these things, we did about corporate sponsorship. I know it came up before. We battered it around. And then in the day-to-day operations and all the volumes of reading and all the work everybody's got to do, board and staff, it just kind of gets lost. So I've been talking to Mark about initiating a parking lot. So what is a parking lot? It's a place to store ideas which we can discuss later, that any board member can add on to. Again, not a paver, but to say, you know what? Having the auditors do a presentation, you know, everybody was kind of shaking their heads saying, oh yeah, that's a great idea. Well, why don't we put that on a parking lot? If to do nothing more but to talk about whether we want to pursue it at a later date because it's simply not, it's not on the agenda. Anybody can do it. And I would go so far as to suggest we review the parking lot at least quarterly at a workshop and decide whether or not we want to move forward on, on, on something. What it is not, it is not a wish list for projects or reports for staff to do or assignments to come back to us. That would have to go through board consensus. And it's not a list of opposing, opposing ideas or, you know, I want to discuss this further. I don't, I don't feel we came to the right answer. I want to discuss this further. That's not what it is either. It's simply a way to kind of catalog ideas to be discussed at a later date. So I'm recommending that we adopt a parking lot. I recommend that our secretary keep it. We could, we could put a piece of paper on the wall and have people add to it during the conference or we could simply, during the meeting, or we could simply say at any point, Joanne, could you put that on the parking lot? Or I suggest, so.
Maybe under new business or something to add to the parking lot.
That's a good point. Maybe add it under new business.
I like the idea.
I like it. I like it a lot. I think the, our discussion on, you know, on, on corporate sponsorships tonight, it was something that's, you know, it's been, we've, we've kind of talked about it here. You know, so that's exactly, I think that's exactly what we need to do. And I, I try to keep notes of, of ideas I have and I try to, I bring them up. I like to shoot out emails because it's a way for me to, to record some of these things.
The documents.
And it helps me find them later. But this is a dynamite idea. And putting it up on the wall, I think, is, is also a great idea. One of the other things that I heard in one of the workshops I was at was, it talked about having up on the wall, your, your kind of, your general school calendar, your board calendar, the seasons of things that we do. Every year we go through, you can, you mark time with, with budget and curriculum adoption and all this. Right. And to have something like that, to just kind of remind you of where we're at and the place of the year and where we're heading next to. And so I think maybe we, the parking lot's a good place to start, but maybe we'll start putting some other things up on the wall too.
Joanne, you remember when we had that? We used to have the, the calendar in front of us.
Do you have the calendar?
No, the, the sayings.
Yeah, it had the eliminated. Four corners, your corner.
Oh, but I thought on the other side.
There was something else that was, I can't remember.
There was a calendar that sort of identified the basic functions of the board.
We had a calendar that you use for the orientation.
Right.
Yeah, that's where I've seen it in orientation. Sure, we could have that easily.
Okay, so we have four things on our parking, parking lot already, the fourth thing, the calendar.
We tow once a quarter, right?
Say again?
The secretary.
Tow once a quarter.
Secretary does not have them, she said. She needs them.
I think I might have mine in my, I kept my orientation manual.
No, she wants the ideas.
Oh, the ideas? A presentation from the auditor. A joint conference, that's something that's come up a number of times. And this is not saying we, we're going to yes or no these, we're just going to talk about these more.
The mandated training.
Right, yes.
Right, mandated training.
All right, just for the record on the mandated training, there are several board members that do not need the training or have taken it. And it can be done online.
The only ones that need it are Julia, Terry and Deb.
Well.
Yeah, but if you run again, you're going to need it.
That's right.
And it can't, but it can be done online.
Yes.
Okay, so we can think about it.
And you can sleep through it.
I think, not to, this was also a great opportunity, an excuse to get the boards together, which I think, so that was part of, that was kind of part of the, the genesis of the idea too.
Adding, increasing health and safety of our students to the strategic initiatives. And the calendar.
Having the calendar.
Having the calendar available and prominent so that we make sure we're on track with all of our.
To-do list.
Necessary to-dos. Is there anything we're missing that somebody wants to bring up at this moment?
I don't think so.
Okay, we'll move to the reception of visitors. This is an opportunity for the audience to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99.
Our audience left us.
Yeah.
That's okay, you never know. Okay. Hearing none, we will adjourn. Our next meeting is in two weeks. I don't know, is it 16th?
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We're adjourned.
Thank you.